Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of the Village Board on January 22nd to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Jacobson?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Staten? Bolling?
Here.
Bretthauer?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is public appearances. We do have a operator's license request for Amy Swenson, and that's been postponed until February 5th. Item B.
So Jerry, we should wait on these items for Hofer until Bruce said that Glenn's bringing this. We can't act on this until they show us to sign annexation agreement.
Oh, okay.
So you want to hold out for a second, please?
We sure can.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll take up item one, the annexation. Oh, this is the Hofer agreement, okay.
Yeah, so we should go to 4A.
Right down to 4A, which is the Alliant Energy easement in South Main parking lot in Jefferson Street. And we've got a recommended motion to approve the underground easement for Alliant Energy for underground electric and communication facilities along Jefferson Street and within the parking lot owned by the village. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Jeff, you have some...
It's pretty straightforward. We have, as you know...
We're undergrounding the utilities, both in the parking lot and along Jefferson Street. And part of that, Alliant needed a little more of an easement along the front and back of our property there. So that's all this is. We've worked with them and Matt with the language on getting this all straightened out. So we recommend approval of it. Allow that to move forward.
All right, is this closing the project that we did along Jefferson Street, the road reconstruction?
No, no. This has everything to do with just the burying of the overhead electric lines.
Okay, just burying the lines.
Yep.
Okay.
Are we entitled to any sort of compensation or equity as a result of granting this easement to Alliant Energy?
In this situation, no. I mean, this is something they're doing for us as part of the project, so it's...
We're paying for it.
We are paying for it already, yes. We are paying them handsomely to bury the lines.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we're not paying them for the easement.
No, but we're giving them dirt, right? They're going to own that?
They don't own it. They just own the right to run their cables in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just an access, it's just a utility access and easement to allow them to run the utilities through that portion of land.
Yeah, if we want them to underground the utility lines, we have to give them the place to go. It's basically where they're coming from.
Got it. Thanks.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are we ready with...
I think we can go back and do...
Go back to 3B?
Yep.
So we'll go back to 3B from the January 11th planning meeting, and I'll let trustee Carpenter make the next motion.
Okay. So all of these items are related. We'll do them one at a time. The first one is discussion and possible action regarding the annexation agreement between the Glenn and Michelle Hofer Living Trust and the Village of Oregon. And so I'll make that motion to get this on the table. I would make the motion that we approve the annexation agreement.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from staff on this item?
Just briefly. So we're at a place where the developer has petitioned the village for annexation. Before the annexation is approved, we'd like this agreement approved. It addresses a number of issues that I think can be addressed most effectively in an annexation agreement. There's not a lot of substance here. There's basically some requirements relating to the developer acknowledging that it will be paying certain fees and costs, and that there are certain public improvement requirements that are being recognized here. Kind of an acknowledgement that there's a future phase, and there will be some issues that we'll need to deal with in that future phase. But this is, there's not a lot here. If you have any questions about this agreement, I'd be happy to answer them. But basically says if the village annexes the territory, which is next on the agenda, the developer agrees with the provisions in this agreement.
Okay, we've got representatives from the Hofer Trust here tonight. Do you have anything, comments you'd like to make?
I don't know if this could be the appropriate time to talk about the preliminary plat? Kind of go over the project?
I thought we should wait to talk about that in the stormwater when we get to the plat, please.
Okay, and that is where Mike?
That would be the third item I need for this item.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions from the board?
I was interested to know how much the village would be paying the developer, or the developer would be paying the village for the taxes?
So the town taxes that have to be reimbursed over five years?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have a number for you. It's likely not a lot, because this is land that, it's ag land now, as I understand it. Is that right? So it's being taxed at probably ag value, which is a very relatively small price per acre. But there is a requirement under Wisconsin law that if the village annexes this territory, the village needs to reimburse the town for its lost tax revenue for five years. This agreement basically requires the developer to reimburse the town for that expense, so...
I see.
Yeah, it's, that amount is basically, it's calculated based on what the actual tax revenue is to the town in the year of the annexation.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
It's pretty small. I remember when we went through that paperwork, it was, wasn't it less than $100 a year?
Yeah.
Something.
Pretty small amount.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to item two.
So this is regarding more annexations. So this is a discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number 18-01, providing for the direct annexation of a portion of the town of Oregon to the Village of Oregon. So I'll get this on the table by making this first motion that by two-thirds vote, we suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from staff or from the board?
All you're doing is suspending the readings during this one, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so then I'll make this motion for discussion. Then I would move that we approve ordinance number 18-01 at tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on that?
This is the actual annexation ordinance. If approved, the territory will be annexed to the village.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then item number three is discussion of possible action regarding resolution number 18-02, conditionally approving the Ridgeview preliminary plat, which is also known as the Hofer Development. So I will make the motion to get this on the table so we can have the developer present. I would make a motion that we approve resolution number 18-02.
Second.
Okay, now we can hear from the representatives from the Hofer State. If you'd like to step up to the microphone and identify yourselves, please.
And then Jerry also provided an email from a village resident who lives on Liliana Terrace in your packet. And I know at the Plan Commission meeting, there was concern about stormwater brought up.
Can you true up the map that was in our packet with this drawing? Show us where it is.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm... All right. My name is Bruce Holler with Denarreyo-Katkin Associates. So you've seen this before earlier, late in the fall of 2017. What we're looking at is a parcel, this portion right here, this being County Trunk MM, Foxfield Road, and Liliana Terrace. So this is what you have in your packet. Pretty much a, well, it is a preliminary plat of what was essentially the concept plan that was presented earlier. Again, we're extending Foxfield Road up to County Trunk MM. Liliana Terrace is teeing into Foxfield Road, and then a connector street called Sienna-Glen Way connects on through the property with a stub of Ridgeview Lane that will ultimately go down and loop into the existing stub further south that's currently in the village. At the Plan Commission meeting, I was not there. I was out of town. So it's my understanding at the village Plan Commission meeting, some items came up were related to the stormwater management, which in this case, the general flow of the land or the watershed slope takes everything to the northwest corner of the property. And there's currently an inlet that's installed collecting water that was put in as part of the Liliana Terrace construction with the expectation that, once this develops, that will handle the release out of the basin that serves this area. There's, as Jeff had mentioned, there was a letter from Mr. Poulser?
Mr. Poulser at Lot 59.
Lot 59 at this corner. And he could not be here tonight, but we are meeting, Jeff and I are meeting with him tomorrow at 4:00 to go through some items to talk about with respect to the overflow route of the pond in the event that there's a catastrophic event that goes above and beyond what we've designed it for. In addition, it sounds like during rain events, heavier rain events, you know, sump pump kicks on and it's running at this point. So the concern is that maybe by adding more water in this area, because we are, there's a county ordinance or we'll have, in a village ordinance, that we'll have to infiltrate a portion of the stormwater. And that's happening in this area here, right by that inlet, in that vicinity. So the concern is that, you know, with that additional water being infiltrated, some, my understanding is that the sump pump will be running more, and he'll be experiencing more runoff or potential infiltration or into a sump pit. So there's that aspect of it. And then the other aspect was just the, once, in the event that, again, we have that large storm event and it overflows, where's it going to go? Downstream, and how's it going to get to Liliana Terrace? Where's, what's it going to, what route is it going to take? So that's, I know that's one of the concerns that's still out there. And we intend to address. Other item that of note that came up is an existing berm along here that was built, I believe, was built, was it prior, while these houses were being put in, maybe?
No, I think the berm kind of was a secondary, when Liliana Terrace was designed, as I've been told, it was designed so that the rear property line, which would be the northern property line of your development, was to be a high point with water from their properties going out to Liliana Terrace and then into the storm sewer system. And I think, as what happens at times, is the final grading, you know, some of the homes did not meet that. So there's a problem along the backside of those homes, but then there's also everything from the field coming down. And I think that's when they worked with the farmer to put a, it's a sizable berm out there, and it extends into the back of those properties quite a bit, to kind of channel that down to that inlet basin.
Just a quick question. How many acres will this cover?
This is 17 acres.
17 acres, and now, is this just beyond Foxborough? Like MM and...
Yep.
Yes. South of Foxborough. Foxborough's kind of in this vicinity.
Right.
We've got homes here, Liliana Terrace, and then homes here up to the golf course.
So these are roads that don't exist yet, where Foxfield and Liliana intersect?
Correct. These are the proposed roads in the plat, and we're connecting to Liliana Terrace here and Foxfield Road here.
Is there a concern about the safety of the crosswalk? I didn't see that it has to be authorized by Dane County.
In this area here, where we're, yeah. There's, when this, with the full buildout of this intersection, which will happen as a part of the final third phase on the east side, that's the, that's when this intersection, the full buildout of MM will occur. And the crossing from the east side to the west side will happen. We've met with the county and talked to them about improvements to MM. At this point, for this phase and the phase to the south, phase two, we're going to be putting in a, for the northbound traffic, we're putting in a bypass lane so that people turning in left will have, you know, if they're waiting to turn in, we'll have a lane, a bypass lane for cars to go around. For southbound traffic, we'll have a taper with a right turn lane, separate right turn lane, so that the southbound traffic can maintain, can continue going through. And then the right turn lane will be put in to get into the development.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I would just say, at the Planning Commission level, there is quite a bit of discussion about the stormwater issues, and it was noted that this is the very first step in the development process, and the developer would need to come back with a stormwater improvement plan and have that approved as well. So there were quite a few people who spoke in the, that live in the Liliana Terrace development. They're concerned about the water issues, but we tried to reassure them that this is just the first process, and we will be, it's slowly working through.
Exactly.
Do you have anything else?
The only other thing that I noted between this, that was noted, from my understanding, is this Outlet Two, this back here that was, we have shown as dedication to parkland, that was going to be eliminated, and these lots were going to be extended because of the slope restriction in the parkland. So whatever is given up here right now will be supplemented at a future date for the parkland dedication to the south.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the board or the staff? Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the table to approve ordinance 18-02 tonight. So, so you have...
Yeah, resolution 18-02.
Yep. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, folks.
Again, one more, Jerry, on the backside.
And then item number four is discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 18-02. And this ordinance is changing the zoning classification of lands within the Ridgeview plat or the Hofer Development. So I'll make this first motion that by two-thirds vote, we suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
Any questions or comments? Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then the second motion I'll make, so we can discuss it, is that we approve ordinance number 18-02.
Second.
And I should say, at the Planning Commission level, and this is in our packet, Mike Slavny pointed out that this, this area has always, not always, but for a very long time, has been slated for residential development in the village, and it's compliant with our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. The board have any questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we'll move on to item four, which is the Village Attorney and Village Administrator Report. Mike, you want to take this?
Sure. So we already did 4A.
Yep.
So 4B is a warranty deed that when Phil and Carol Peterson sold the property to the church where the Ford Development subdivision's going to be built, they had a provision in there that, subject to the board's approval, that the family, the Peterson family, would get a chance to name the public parks and public streets within the subdivision. Ford Development's okay with that, but it would, it requires the board to grant that, that permission to have the Peterson family name the public streets in the Ford Development subdivision. And there's a, it's a map that was in the packet, and I circled the streets. At this point, Jeff and I are not feeling comfortable that we name the park. At this point, we may, we may just want to name the park after the name of the subdivision for identification, but they're comfortable with naming, for example, you look at Streets A, B, C, D, E, and F.
And G.
And G, thank you.
I make that a motion that the Petersons could name the streets.
One second, please.
With approval by the village board, I think, right? Because, yeah, we'd like to run, have those names run through, at least staff, just so we can kind of compare that there's not two Thompson lanes again.
All right.
I'll second. So you want to add that to your motion?
Sure. They're fine.
So again, add the pending approval by the village board, then?
Yep.
Onto that motion. And Jeff, I believe you seconded that.
I'll second.
Okay. And then Mike, will you be contacting the Petersons tomorrow?
I'm going to send them the map tomorrow. Yep. I'll call Phil.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Let them know that Boudreaux Boulevard's got a really nice ring to it.
BB.
County Highway BB.
Yeah. Well, no, we can't do that now.
I'll tell them that, Jerry. This next item is just more of a heads up that we're going to be talking about this a little bit next Monday night during the special board meeting. We're going to be talking about possibly locating a lift station on the other side of 14. And, you know, as I noted on the agenda, I want to thank you, thank Jeff for bringing this idea of affordable workforce housing to our attention last year and put it on our agenda. And I think, hope you found, it was interesting, over the holidays, I found these articles that were in the paper, and there was like two or three of them. We found that interesting. And as I noted on the agenda, both Matt and Slav, Mike Slavny, have experience working on this type of housing, so it's coming. So I want with Jeff's help, we're going to, you know, prepare the village to be ready to introduce this type of housing to future developments in the village.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good. Okay, so this is just the initial discussion.
Yep.
Anybody on the board have any comments at this time, since this is just starting? Okay. Trustee Boudreaux, you want to add anything?
No, I think the articles just do a fantastic job of making the case, so I'd really encourage everybody to go back and read those articles, even the people that are watching, to go back and read those articles.
Yeah, they're online, yep.
Okay. All right. Move on to item five, then, which is approval of minutes, of which we have none. We'll move on to item six, which is approval of vouchers. We have operating fund invoices of $1,143,845.73, and we have electronic fund transfers of $8,627,380.75, for a total of $9,771,226.48. And we'll pay those tonight, assuming they get approved.
I'll make the motion to approve the vouchers.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any of the trustees have questions or comments on any of the bills we're going to pay here tonight?
The only one I have is the 2015, the Dane County Highway Department for the street improvement. Do we pay all of that amount, or is that partially half?
What number is that?
150.
2015.
Page three, Jeff.
Yeah, page three, about half.
Street improvements. That's, yeah, that's the one, that's the entire payment, that our share of the Dane County work. I think the estimate was 160, so we're right, right there.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I thought, but I...
Yep, exactly.
Rather a large amount, 170, the bottom of the column? Tiff 5 Berry 3 Phase Power along?
Yes. That caught somebody's eye. That, those, that's the total charges from Alliant Frontier and Charter to bury all the cables, both along Jefferson as well as within the parking lot.
Those are final charges, then, or ongoing?
They're, no, that's the estimated amount.
Estimated amount.
Yeah. And so we have to pay the estimated amount to allow them to authorize the work.
I see.
They're usually very, very close.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, I don't have any questions on tonight's bills. Would the clerk please call a roll on this?
Grenier?
Yes.
Bretthauer?
Yes.
Bolling?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bills are approved. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is community input. And we do have someone who would like to address us tonight. Marilyn, would you like to step forward? And identify yourself, and tell us why you're here.
Is this good?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Okay, I hear it. Okay. I'm Marilyn McDowell. I live on Pleasant Hope Drive in the village. And I am here to make a few brief comments about the library and the former, soon-to-be former director of the library. The departure of Nikki Bush, Director of the Oregon Public Library, has sent shockwaves through the community. While I have no direct knowledge of the actions that took place surrounding this decision, I will say that the bad feelings and apparent lack of respect between some village board trustees and the library director appears to be part of the problem. I have written the village board with my thoughts about the future direction of the library, and I won't belabor that point. What is extremely important for all involved to remember is this. It is necessary to listen to everyone's opinions with respect, acknowledge their contribution, understand their views, and work together to accomplish goals. There should be no finger pointing or accusations about lack of gratitude. This simply ratchets up the emotions and is counterproductive to quality discussions. Also, to expect nongovernmental organizations to fundraise nearly 40% of the cost of what the board determined was a minimally acceptable library that would take Oregon well into the future is unfair and is likely an unsustainable position. Nikki Bush has provided great leadership, and I'm very sorry to see her leave. Thank you for your time.
Board and community residents? Okay, hearing none. I will move on to item eight, which is proclamations and announcements. Are there any board comments at this time? Okay, item B. Are there any staff comments?
I have a few.
I see that. You have a whole list.
Actually, I have a new one that Randy Glisch wanted me to announce. On Saturday, January 27th, and Sunday, January 28th, visitors of the Firefly will be encouraged to visit the new youth center building display and donate. The new owners, Genie and your, Carpenter, will match donations received up to $500. Randy will also donate five pieces of his custom stained glass and donate all the proceeds to the youth center building project. Pretty cool.
That's very cool. Thank you. Thanks, Genie.
Thanks. Thank you, Ray.
And then we are still looking for members on HPC. I'm going to ask the Observer and me to do a story about, try to get some interest out there for the HPC. And then, there's the list of meetings. Next Monday, we have a special board meeting for the list station analysis. And then February 5th is a joint meeting with the Park Board to talk about JC Park West, and then the board meeting on the 12th. And then there's no meeting on the 19th of February because of the election on the 20th. And then, I'm going to try to have committee meetings on the 26th. And then on March 5th, Mike Slavny will be here to discuss possible options for the village hall and moving towards finalizing the civic campus plan.
January 29th meeting, is that the list station analysis for the...
East side of 14.
East of 14. Okay. All right. All right. Is there everything, Mike?
So ahead, thank you.
All right, thank you. Move on to item nine, which is communications and miscellaneous business. Item A is discussion of possible action regarding Jefferson Street sewer backup and settlement plan. And we've got a recommended motion here. Approve noted village reimbursement amounts and denial of claim at five oh nine Jefferson Street. Payment by the village to claimants or service providers pending submission of full release of claim by claimant. And in our packet, there is a list of people who have filed for reimbursement.
So I'll make that motion for discussion.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and any discussion on this item from the board or staff? I do have a question. How much money is in budget for eighteen for this item?
Thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars?
Annually, we budget thirty thousand dollars, and this had come out of, does this come out of 2017, or, because it occurred in 2017, or would it?
It's going to get, it's going to get charged to the budget in eighteen.
Okay, yeah. So that would give us a balance of still twenty-five thousand, at least for the remainder of the year.
So we're off to a fast start.
Well, yeah, this is, I don't know how much I want to comment on this, but this has been a long time coming. This is something that's kind of gone back and forth. I think we've landed on a resolution that limits our exposure as a village. There's residents out there that have been waiting for a very long time for reimbursement, and we've been waiting for the contractor to follow up, which they did not. We were waiting, then their insurance company made the denial, and then it was going to be drug out into court. And honestly, I don't think for the amount that we are, I kind of gave them a proposed solution that gave some shared costs on things that, you know, the village could or would cover, and then other things that they would be a hundred percent responsible for. So they're still carrying the larger share of it, but I think this will, assuming, you know, we will get sign-offs from all of these people before we would make a payment to them, but I think this is a good solution for a questionable incident. It's always hard when you're working around very, very old stuff. And, you know, the manhole collapsed. Would it have collapsed that day had they not been working next to it? No, but when you're working around very, very old stuff, sometimes it's just that little bit that maybe could make it fail, and so.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any questions?
Any further questions?
Thank you for your work on finding a solution.
Yeah. How are the residents with your solution? Are they all pretty amiable?
I think it's been working well. I don't, do we have any residents here tonight with that? I don't think so. So I guess that's good. But, yeah, they've all been, I think, they've been very patient, and actually, I publicly thank them for them being patient.
Great. Okay.
And, I'm sorry, just to clarify also, for the denial at five oh nine, the reason we're denying that is I, it was, for what I think it was a very, very large claim that really was unsubstantiated. It basically involved a complete remodel, proposed remodel of a basement. Of course, we won't pay for that, and we'd never recommend that. Then when I contacted the company that the bid was from, because it was just an estimate, they said they had never done the work. So that's why we're recommending denial of that claim.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Pending no further questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion on the table.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, item B is we've got some police department reports. We've got the K-9 report, the school resource officer reports, summary of major crimes. Chief Yule, you have any comments on this?
I don't know if you had a chance to look at the K-9 annual report. Just to let you guys know, obviously, our K-9 handler, Officer Coleman, was injured for most of the year, half the year, so some of these numbers reflect that. You will also notice that there are several surrounding agencies that have utilized our K-9 for assistance as well. I thought the detailed summary of this log and the software that we use is very detailed, so provides a good overview of what we use the K-9 for. Any questions on that at all?
Yeah, this is very good information, chief.
Yeah.
Question I had is, when they ask for assistance, is it because they don't have a dog, or because?
Yeah, it's usually because they don't have a dog, or if they do have a dog, their dog's not available, not working at the time, or can't be called in.
Day off, huh? Dog, yeah.
You know, they do get days off once in a while.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dog gets two weeks vacation.
Yeah, right. Just like the handler.
How do they determine a sniff? I see that a lot of these reports are, they're just doing what they call a sniff.
Yeah, you're talking about the tracking report?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So they'll go to the area where the suspect was last known and try to pick up a scent that they, you know, they hope is the suspect. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't.
What about a vehicle? How do they determine if they're going to have the dog sniff around the vehicle?
Just like with any other, you know, if they're suspicious of something when they make a traffic stop, whether it's an odor or driver behavior, they can just bring the dog in and have it sniff around the vehicle.
Okay.
Anytime they have an alert, then that gives them probable cause to search the vehicle.
That's good information.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? School resource officer reports. Any comments from the chief?
No, Kyle does a good job, as usual, of updating us with what he's doing during the week. We have started doing quarterly meetings with the school to go over any, I'll say, differences and philosophies on some of the things that happen in the school. So it's good to have good communication with the school and their administration.
Very good. And summary of major crimes, those are all there for the board's information. Anyone have any questions for the chief? Thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
Item C, a discussion of possible action regarding the Dane County Law Enforcement Training Center user agreement. We've got a recommended motion to approve the agreement. Has anything changed in this agreement?
No.
No?
Right, say no.
Okay. So we've got no?
So I'll make that motion, but can you help me refresh my memory? What was the motion that we, the agreement that we made the motion for at the last meeting?
That was for the Madison Police Department training site. So once a year, we go to the Dane County range.
Set the one up in Monkey?
Yep, that's an outdoor range. We do all of our rifle recertification, handgun state qualifications at this course. It has several different ranges, so we can get all of our training consortium in and do it all in one day.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Item D?
Thank you.
You're welcome, chief. Thank you. Discussion of personal, possible action, or no? This is just?
It's a memo.
A memo from Paul Zooker, Cable TV. Any questions on that? And then we've got the item E, review of the building permit connection fees. Any questions or comments from staff or the board on this?
Please have your single-family permits in seventeen and sixteen, but we started a pretty good year overall.
Yeah, it was a pretty good year.
Value-wise, yeah. Helps when you build an apartment project.
Yeah. Got apartment project. Oh, Paul's here. Paul, we just got done with your item. Did you have any comments?
Apologies.
No, you don't have to apologize. Just, do you have any comments on?
We were troubleshooting some stuff. Let me step up.
Please.
Just quickly, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Paul Zooker, program coordinator, Oregon Cable Access. Just wanted to thank the village personally for helping us help the village with our broadcasts, our live streams, and our community involvement. I think we're moving forward in a pretty fast direction over the last couple of years, and have added a lot to the community with our broadcasting, our live streaming, and our technical abilities when they prove to work out for us. We live and die by technology, and sometimes it fails us in spite of our best efforts. So we are live streaming currently. We are broadcasting currently through our new equipment that you assisted us in purchasing last year. And that's about it. I think we're moving into new places and feeling pretty good about helping our high school kids learn a little bit about TV and helping us let the community know what's going on out there.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You made it just in the nick of time. Okay, we'll move on to item F, which is declaring certain items surplus. We've got a recommended motion to approve declaring the list of items in your packet as surplus.
So move.
Have a second, please.
A second, Pat.
And? How are we going to dispose of this equipment?
Throw it away.
Throw it away?
It's broken.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G, another motion, a recommended motion is to approve appointing Uriah Carpenter to the Cable TV committee, replacing John Botson Field.
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'm probably going to abstain from this.
Why is that?
Since he's my husband. That seems appropriate.
You're really awkward when you voted against it.
You might hear about it. Yeah.
From, probably from Cable TV more than Uriah. All those in favor?
Aye.
You can tell him he's been appointed.
Yeah. And I'll abstain. I'll abstain, Peggy.
Item H, discussion of possible actions regarding 2018 North and South Prairie Parkway Utility and Street Improvement Project bidding. We've got a recommended motion to authorize public works to advertise and commence the bidding process for the 2018 North and South Prairie Parkway Utility and Street Improvement Project. And we've got a current estimate on that project of one point four million dollars, and that includes water and sewer. Jeff, would you like to?
Do you need to get a second on that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry. Yeah, this is monumental.
There's no second, bud.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sorry.
I'll go back here. It's monumental, actually, and the drawings are ready, the plans are ready, and the bid package is ready to go. Working out just a few very minor, minor kinks right now, but everything should be good to go, and if approved, we'll be advertising this Thursday and opening in approximately three and a half weeks.
Really?
Thank you.
And then construction this spring and summer.
Is this going to include stoplights at the intersection of Prairie Parkway and Janesville Street?
No.
So I'd encourage you to think about that and bring that to a future board meeting.
Yeah. That's what, we acknowledge that this is going to cause some changes in traffic patterns, just as much as like the Hofer subdivision is going to cause some changes in traffic patterns. And so whenever we see something like this go in, it always kind of puts our high on the radar to be looking at, you know, what's going to happen. We look at probably the stresses being on Prairie Parkway, and also probably down at Park and Janesville Street as well. Those projects are in our capital improvement plan.
They are.
But we're going to have to look at whether or not we need to move those up in the capital improvement plan based off of, after this is able to operate for a while.
Thank you, Jeff. Any further questions from the board? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Yes, thank you.
You can commence on that project. Item ten, reported committees, we have none. Item eleven, minutes not requiring action in your packet, there's some library board.
Jerry, can I say something about the library for minutes?
Please.
Okay, so I included the email from Nikki about, that the library board did approve using the impact fees for the library property purchase, and I want to thank them for that. But I also want to emphasize that per Matt, we will not make that transfer until the MOU signed between the village board and library board.
It's probably a very good idea.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
When do you anticipate the next meeting to look at the MOU?
In February thirteenth.
And is that a public meeting?
Oh, yeah, they're all public, yeah. We notice it in the back room, back of the village hall.
There are actually people who come and listen and watch.
That's awesome.
Yep.
It's pretty exciting.
So those meetings are back?
We sit in, yeah, it's a working meeting, so we sit in the back of the room. Yep.
Okay. Item twelve, unfinished business, there is none. Item thirteen, new business. We have no new operator licenses, no new pending renewal operator licenses. And item fourteen, we've got some future agenda items there. And item fifteen, adjournment. Have a motion for adjournment, please.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.